Push the call to order. The Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for January nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. I'll open with a roll call vote. Michael?
I'm here.
Don? Steve?
Here.
Ed?
Yeah.
And I'm here. So, yeah. Moving next in to invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Joe. My pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we're going to take new business out of order. I've had a request to move up item A, which I will begin by inviting. It's a business to amend the interim town administrator's appointment and contract. And, Don, I would invite you to make a motion that we can discuss.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen convert the interim town administrator's appointment to that of town administrator and that all references to interim, quote unquote, in his current contract be deleted. I further move that the Board authorize the Chair to enter into negotiations for a three-year extension of the town administrator's contract under such terms and conditions as may be acceptable to both parties.
I'll second. Is there a second? Steve, thank you. Are there discussions?
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
I'm assuming that you and Don had a conversation about this. Have all the other Board members had a conversation about this?
Don sent me a text message just now asking to make the motion. We did not discuss the details, just in a general way that we had discussed before.
Do you want to have a copy of the motion?
And.
Okay, thank you for the answer. And then I would ask that, is this a bit premature, given Joe's coming announcement on whether or not he's going to be taking a job in another town?
My view on that is that it would be an offer. He, we make an offer. It's up to him to either accept or decline it.
My, my view is, is that that's a separate discussion. And we should do this to broadly indicate our intent. The decision, the future of Joe is actually up to Joe. Can't go much beyond that. But this is, this is not from Joe, this is from us. Here we go, other discussion.
Larry, I'm just gonna, Larry, I'm gonna put it out there just so that it's clear to my critics why I stand where I stand. I believe that the Board went out for a town administrator search. We, as a Board, based on charter, could not agree. And rather than go back out for another search, a Board member made a motion that required less votes, required a three to two instead of a four to zero, and put us in the, in the position that we're in now. I believe that in good faith, we all voted in contract for the interim town administrator. Though I will add that I always thought the "I" should never have been in front of it. He was our town administrator for a year. I would, I will add that Joe received on the first performance evaluation by all Board members, an exceeded expectations vote. And I think he deserved that. I believe that the Chairman of the Board and the Board served its responsibilities in adding a second performance evaluation. So we have fallen behind on that, like we have many other things. And, and by all accounts, Joe is tracking to be the next town administrator with a longer-term contract. I believe that Joe made a decision for himself and his family to go apply for another job, which I completely and totally understand and respect, based on only having a year and for whatever personal reasons he made that decision. And I do believe that this Board, as a Board, has not made a, made an effort to finish the process that we agreed to start. And I would argue that Don's motion, because it failed at the, at the four to zero based on charter, and the way that this has gone, has failed to do its job in getting the, 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 the process done right. Therefore, I'm going to vote no on this contract on those reasons and those reasons alone. And Joe, I, I hope you don't take that as me saying that, that you haven't done a good job, because we never got to a point where we could give you a second evaluation. And I think my first evaluation spoke for itself. But I believe that this Board is doing things quite backwards and operating at a point of weakness at this point and, and, and a knee-jerk reaction. As far as the no conversations go, Don, I, I don't believe you for a second. Because everything that's being done lately is being done in a vacuum. And only certain Board members are allowed inside of that vacuum. With that said, Don, you can respond if you want to respond. I'm not going to go toe-to-toe with you tonight. It doesn't mean anything. What I just said was my opinion and my opinion only and where I stand. And it's not to slight Joe whatsoever. But it was an explanation for my critics, so that they get it right when they write about it.
Don, and then I will do a vote.
Yeah, I can't address anybody's paranoia over how things are happening, but I can address the, the fact that Joe has been in this position now for one town meeting, two run-ups to a town warrant, and effectively for fifteen months, because the prior town administrator, as we all know, ceased coming to any meetings or doing any work from October of nineteen forward. He's done a commendable job, as Michael has pointed out. And I'm not willing to wait while we worry about whether the trains are running on time to get a second evaluation. And it's pretty clear he's doing the job. He's done the job. The public would like him to continue doing that job. Whether he turns, don't turn this around that this is about him seeking another opportunity. He had no faith in this Board producing this contract. And that's why I'm making this motion, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Larry, just because Don, just because Don made an accusation that I'm turning something around, I want to go back to my comments, because Don clearly wasn't listening. And Joe, for your benefit, it's not what I'm saying and why I'm saying it. I think my explanation was pretty on point. But Don's got his own, own notions and his own thoughts, and he can think what he wants, but it's not what I said.
Okay, moving on. Is Steve or Ed, you have any comments? And then I'll, I'll take a vote.
Larry, Steve, I, I think all of you know that I have been pushing for, for Joe to, for us to address the contract issue with Joe. In fact, I initially was the one who, who proposed Joe as our town administrator the last time we actually voted on this. And it's been my hope for some time that we would, after seeing Joe perform the way he has, which Michael thankfully lauded, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure Joe does too, that it's time for us to move ahead. There are so many things going on in this town that need the attention of both the Selectmen and a full-time town administrator, that it's very, very important, in my opinion, to make this move now. I don't think it has anything to do with, with Yarmouth. I don't blame Joe for entertaining outside opportunities. But I want him to know, at least from my perspective as a Selectman, that, you know, I want us to offer him a contract. I want him to be here for an extended period of time. I want him to be a part of our team, a leader of our team. And I felt that way for quite some time. So I, I just reiterate some of what Don said, but also, as you know, I've been pushing this for some time.
Thank you, Steve. Ed?
Well, we all know I was one of the two people that didn't vote initially for Joe. And I had some, some concerns about his, his performance. As Mr. McCaskill has pointed out, though, we all did give him a exceeds-expected evaluation at the first point. I'll, I'll be honest, there are still some issues that I'm going to continue to try and work with Joe on to improve. But, you know, in life, we all have friends and people that we don't see everything eye to eye, but we do quite well working with each other. And I feel, you know, at this point, in the town's situation with all that is going on, we need to continue to move forward. And I believe having a, a period where we go through another search in a interim manager would be detrimental to the town's progress. So I will be voting yes for this, but no, that is, with being open to all comments on what people see as needed improvements. And I will, for my own part, take what I think are needed improvements and work with Mr. Powers to make sure those happen.
Thank you all. Again, I think we're in agreement. There's a outstanding performance. From our aspect, there seems to be one question or a couple of questions on process, but we need to move ahead. I'll take a roll call vote. Ed?
Yes.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
No.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So four to one approval of Don's motion. Thank you for that discussion. Moving next in is Joe, you now get to speak. The COVID-19 updates, which, there's, there's a lot.
Without a doubt, Mr. Chairman, and I know, I saw a moment ago our Public Health Director. I'm not sure if Megan's still available, because the, the Board of Health is meeting concurrently. All right, there she is. So in the interest of her time, I'd like to turn it right over to Megan for her latest updates.
Hi, Megan.
Hi, Larry. Thanks, everybody. I do have a little bit of a lengthy update for you this week. We remain in the red. We remain in a, in a high-risk community, because we did have a one-hundred-and-three new case record in two weeks. That's, that's the biggest we've had since the beginning of this. That one oh-three over two weeks put us in the positivity category of the red. So it's at six-point-eight-five percent. We have over four hundred cases in town now. Our total is four-fourteen. And last Friday, when I wrote this weekly update, we had thirty-six active cases. And today, we're down to twenty-three. So that is a good sign. People are recovering, and we're not gaining as many new cases every day. Most of the Cape is in, in the red. From the bridge all the way through Chatham, we're all, we're all seeing the surge. There's a possibility next week we'll see a reduction. I don't anticipate getting out of the red just yet. Maybe give it another week and a half. So that's, that's where we're at with cases. Those cases do include some positives at Wingate, the long-term care facility. Both positives in staff members as well as residents. They are unfortunately going through another surge like they were seeing back in May. They have had to call in the help of a rapid response team from the state in order to back up staff that they've lost due to quarantine issues. And they're working with the state every day for infection control, making sure they have the, the right amount of personal protection equipment. They are doing binax testing of their staff and their residents on a regular basis every three to five days. So they're hopefully catching these positives before they're, they're spread throughout the facility. But we do have quite a few of that one oh-three is, is Wingate. I would, off the top of my head, I would say probably twenty to twenty-five is, is Wingate. One popular question we are getting is about the vaccine. The vaccine clinics have started for first responders. Last week, the county staffed and rolled out their regional clinic for our first responders. There were several of them across the Cape. Our town members were able to go to the, the clinic that was held in Orleans. And they're still operating that clinic. And we're, we're hoping to get that clinic set up as a regional clinic throughout the last two phases. We're working on that. If it's not going to be there, it's going to be somewhere similar. We are working as, as a health agents group to, to do two things. One is vaccinate the high-risk population in the next phase and, and Phase Three. That includes those people over the age of seventy-five, people with more than two comorbidities, and other healthcare workers. We, we do have the ability to do an emergency dispensing site for, for a small, a small amount of people, say a thousand, two thousand people over the course of several days here in Harwich. But we are going to partner with our neighbors to do a regional clinic that will serve the larger populations. We're not doing a sign-up right now. We're not taking names. We're not getting a waiting list or anything like that. That's one of those popular questions we get on the phone every day. There is not a sign-up for this at this point. We're, we're getting information week to week, just like everyone is. Eligible members are in these phases and subgroups. And as those subgroups are next up for, for their shots, we will roll out that particular part of our vaccination plan to, to fit that, that demographic specifically. So Harwich residents will have a few options. If they're unable to get to a site, we will have a mobile-type clinic where we will come to you. We're working on that. I'm working with Council on Aging to make sure we vaccinate our elderly population and our most vulnerable population when, when they're due. In your packet, there is information from the county as well. They did launch a new helpline, a COVID-19 helpline. It is now open Monday through Friday from eight AM to four-thirty PM. And I'm going to give you the number, so people can call this number for any COVID questions, specifically vaccine testing. It's staffed by MRC volunteers, Medical Reserve Corps volunteers. The number is seven-seven-four-three-three-zero-three-zero-zero-one. And they said today they had over eight hundred calls before noon today. So please be patient. They are answering as fast as they can and returning phone calls. So if you have a question and you want a quick answer, you may want to call your local Board of Health. But if it's something that can wait, you can call this regional COVID-19 helpline that's staffed by Medical Reserve Corps volunteers. And they, the county is, is great. They, they find ways to take some of the, the work off of the local towns. And hopefully, this will take some of the, the time-consuming phone calls and emails off of local Boards of Health. Right now, we're still in Phase One for vaccines. First responders are finishing up their first dose. Next week, we are anticipating congregate care settings. We don't have too many of those in Harwich, corrections and shelters. But they then will be opening it up to home-based healthcare workers as well as healthcare workers that are not COVID-facing care. So the administration staff, the back, the backend staff that isn't face-to-face with patients. Phase Two is where more of the general public will be able to get their shots. And we are expecting that to start in early February. Keep checking back to the websites for updates on these things. The state vaccine subcommittees meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they often change things and provide updates. They, they add or move around people who are in the, the priority groups. So keep your eye on the state website. Our website links to it as well as the county. Let's see. We also have, the testing is still underway at Outer Cape and at the other sites on the fairgrounds and at the Melody Tent. Those places, all of these places do require appointments. And the phone numbers are listed on our website as well. Other things that are happening, we're still in this temporary phase of restrictions, added restrictions. They are scheduled to end on Sunday. However, the trends that the state are showing aren't all that promising for, for us to get out of this temporary phase. I believe the Governor will be having a press conference tomorrow or Thursday to speak about this. And as always, we could be surprised, and he could lift this additional restriction, and we could go back to where we were the, the end of twenty-twenty, where we were at fifty percent capacity rather than twenty-five. But again, we don't know that until he steps in front of the camera. So we'll, we'll be waiting as you are for that information. And then lastly, we are seeing trends that do reflect this new variant of COVID-19 throughout Massachusetts. Not so much on the Cape at this point. But just so the public is aware, a percentage of every testing pool that the state gets is sent to the CDC. And it's analyzed for whether or not it includes the new variants of COVID-19. So when that information comes about, Department of Public Health will alert us to that information. The new variants are more transmissible. They, you need fewer particles to get sick. You can get, get sick from being around someone for fewer amount of time. We do believe the vaccine will cover the new variant of COVID-19. So we're still on the right track for becoming vaccinated for this variant as well. I am happy to take any questions.
Megan? I heard today that the Governor signed, or resigned to request insurance companies cover asymptomatic testing as well, symptomatic testing. Have you heard that as well?
That, that was, I believe, a few weeks ago that came about. People are, are able to get tested if they're asymptomatic through insurance. And it's become a barrier for some people, not wanting to pay that one-hundred-and-ten, one-hundred-and-forty dollars for a test if they can't get their insurance company to cover it. So it's one, one method that the state has been trying to do. I haven't heard if it's been approved, but that's one reason why I'm so excited about the Outer Cape Health doing the program they're doing now. It's a rapid test, but it's free, and it's, it's very accurate for asymptomatic individuals. But it, it will be a great thing when the insurance companies will cover asymptomatic individuals as well.
Thank you, Megan. Other comments or questions before making this back to a real job? Thanks, Megan.
You're welcome.
Board of Health for me.
All right, I will. Have a good night.
Joe, I, I'll let you direct traffic here.
Sure, certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hand it right over to our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, Cindy Williams, for her update.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Just the latest of what we are doing. Last week, I voiced a radio, a radio spot that will be promoting shopping online locally in Harwich, our restaurants, as well as supporting our small businesses. This is running through March. This is a campaign that the Chamber is doing for these outlets, especially trying to drive more shopping online locally and continuing to support this. So that is running on coffee radio. And as I said, that will run through March. And then we'll be launching the online retail shopping component on our website, as well as keeping the update on the open restaurants. Other than that, everyone's still moving ahead, plugging away and keeping things going.
Cindy, I hear from others that, I guess more towards Outer Cape. I assume it's true in lower, where we are as well, that there's more people around. People are sticking around and not going, they're hiding out on the Cape, as my wife likes to say.
There definitely is more people around. My parking lot is constantly busy, not to the levels of the summer, of course, but definitely a lot of traffic down here. I have been speaking with some of the restaurants that are open, certainly. And they're having some really good nights. It's strange, the nights that you wouldn't expect to be busy, they're busy. So, you know, they're all doing their best, keeping going and keeping out there with promoting themselves, as well as getting the word out that they are open, that it is safe, that people do want to come into the restaurants, they can, but that the takeout is happening as well. And people are shopping. I love, I love seeing in the parking lot all the little bags. I, I can tell which stores they've been in by the color of the bags.
Well, I guess as long as you all start looking in them, you're okay.
No, I'm not. But yes, everyone's, everyone's holding their own for this time of year.
Okay, it's good news. Any other comments or questions for Cindy? Thanks for the report.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Joe, based on the message we got to get from Caleb or Jamie, there's no one signed up for public comment tonight.
Correct, and we have not heard of any change to that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move next into the annual committee presentations. First on is Forest Committee. Is there anyone here speaking to that? Moving next into Golf Committee. I know we have some people here. I see Clem and.
Larry?
Who's, Michael, yes.
Can we go back to the Forest Committee?
Sure.
I don't believe we have an active, fully-enrolled Forest Committee. And I guess I would just ask again if we could have staff and the interview committee give us a list of what's populated with who, so that we can, I think, avoid putting committees on that aren't actually meeting. And we had this discussion, same discussion last year. And the Forest Committee is one that is required, I believe, by the state. So it's not a committee that we could dissolve for lack of membership. But maybe we should try and populate that. But without knowing who's on what, we can't populate it.
Now, that's, you have two good points. One is the Forest Committee is mandatory. Secondly, I know Patty has been working very hard to pull together the up-to-date list that is not available, but is easy to maintain with the comings and goings. I think, Joe, she's almost complete with that. It's been taking more effort than she thought. But, Joe, you want to give us an update on where she is on that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, nothing more to add than what you just said, meaning she's presently working through it. I know she's working with the Clerk's Office. She's also assembling the annual town report. So that's enough to keep her up to her eyeballs and paper at this point.
Because the other thing she's looking at, based on conversation out of the town clerk, we do have some committee members that need to be reappointed that have fallen behind. And so we're anxious to get that settled, too. Don? And so we're anxious to get that settled too. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I had hours worth of a conversation with her last week over this issue. There are still numerous differences between what she has and what Anita has as appointments. Some of the appointments were never followed through. And I, and I suggested, and I will suggest again, that if somebody doesn't go to get sworn in within 60 days of their appointment, we should not count them as appointed. That, that's one reason there's a great disparity. But again, there were, there is a heck of a lot of differences between what the town clerk's office has and what the front office has. And I went over the timeline with her about, we're going to be starting in March, not in May, to mailing out requests for re-ups so that we can have more time to be able to assemble a credible renewal list and also know exactly who it is. That, that's not really an appointment. I know that there are a lot of people that are actually meeting in committees that don't appear to have actually been sworn in or whose appointments lapsed. And I was mortified to hear, and I went back and looked at it. I think I mentioned this to you, Mr. Chair, the community center, Facilities Committee, that was created by town meeting. They haven't met in a year, but more frightening is they just put somebody in from Wreckin Youth that voted them onto that committee without any input from the Board of Selectmen. And it is a confirmation process. They nominate, but they, they don't have the authority to put anybody there. So there's a lot of problems still out there that need to be resolved. It's not just a process thing and it's not just throwing people at it.
Thank you for the, for your, your help on that, Don. That's, we have a bigger problem than we thought. But Michael, we will, we're pushing on this.
Larry, just to follow up, and thanks, Don, for bringing it up because I did ask Don, as 50% of the interview committee, about a couple of things. It came up in the last two board meetings. The Facilities Committee was one of them. And I didn't get an answer, but it sounds like I have an answer now. But with that said, and the mess that it sounds like we're in, is there, is the interview committee, the Board of Selectmen as a whole, or the town administrator? What are we going to do to get out of this hole? I, I heard Don say he was going to, he worked with Patty for hours and that I believe he's had conversations with Anita. I believe I heard Joe say that Anita and Patty are working together on this. But this has been an issue that's been going on for three or four years. And now we have a new staff person or a fairly new staff person, I think it sounds like, focused on fixing this. But given what Don just said about the appointment from the Facilities Committee, if that's a, a non-appointment, then what are we as a board going to do about that? If anything, are we just going to kick the can down the road and bring this back up in 30 days again?
Don?
Yeah, Larry, I just want to mention that off that meeting and off of Michael's email, I called Leo Kukunis up because it's not as off-the-wall as that sounds. He was the one who made the amendment to the motion on the 1998, I think it was, a town meeting to specify ex-official members. But I asked him what his recollection was and what his intent was. It was never to have those just directly not appointed by, appointed committees. That, you know, he viewed the charter as saying that the selectmen have appointment authority. And I believe that he's true, he's correct and Michael was correct. So ultimately, we have, but they haven't met in a year either. So that's just as confusing to me because they gave a report as if things were happening. I've had a conversation with Mr. Powers too, but I want to, I want to try to dive more deeply into it and get back to the board with a suggestion about how the facilities might be worked in the future. But it's going to require a town meeting action. We can't do it on our own because the committee was not created by us.
I think what I'm hearing is, is that we have two, two items we need to tend to. One is, is to have Patty and Anita with Joe's help, clarify and identify who's on what boards and get all the data correct. The second item, it seems like both you, Don, and you, Michael, brought up is we need an agenda item on the process. If people don't accept the, the committee within, say, what, 30, 60 days, he gets sworn in?
Larry?
They're not on the committee. So we can develop some of the process, I think, to help that out. Jed?
Yeah. I don't, I've never seen, and I don't believe we've actually ever established a, a document that lays out the timing, you know? If, if you accept an appointment, you have X number of days. We, we, we don't have anything like that. And we need to have those sorts of rules memorialized in some sort of document that as soon as somebody gets appointed, they get it. And it tells them what they have to do. One, to become a, a member. And two, on the other end, how to no longer be a member because we have problems with that also of people resigning committees, telling their chairman, telling one of us, but refusing to, to write a letter specifying it, which the only way we can create, create that vacancy that that resignation has is if there's a document that winds up going into the clerk's office. And, you know, we have literally had people just, you know, I quit. I don't, why do I have to write anything, you know? So we need to get that straightened out. And then the other thing we need to do is to create a feedback loop between the administrator's office and the clerk's office. So once an appointment's made and a letter goes out and the person shows up, there needs to then be notification back to us that they've completed the process. Because a lot of looking through, a lot of the problems with the records, that never came back full circle to, to the administrator's office. And they assume that the person carried through, when in fact, they hadn't. So we need to make sure that we build in a feedback loop between the two offices so that that happens automatically rather than only when, it only happens when we have a problem and somebody has to go digging for it.
We're sort of airing our differences. One of my particular ones is we occasionally forget to send letters to those who have been nominated for a committee and not chosen to allow, to let them know and to give their, and give our thanks to them. Is it? Is the interview committee volunteering to work on drafting an overall policy?
We're meeting tomorrow to do an interview and we can extend that meeting to take up some of these other matters.
Be happy to.
Okay. And we'll, we'll add that part back on the agenda, Joe, then, on where we go from there. And we'll ask Joe for, through Patty's review, to give us an update on how they're working with coordinating the results between Patty and Anita to get the facts straight. Okay?
Will do.
Moving next then, moving next to the Golf Committee then. Thank you, Larry. Clem, you will, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I think you received my communication to the selectmen. Basically, I gave you an outline of this challenging year. I dubbed it the Year of the COVID. I guess that's an understatement. And basically, I'd just like to share a couple of insights that weren't included in the report. And feel free to ask me any questions. I have Roman Greer available tonight too. I didn't want to get too far out on the end of the plank. And I wanted to thank him personally at the, at the front end of this report, as well as Ed McManus, our liaison. I think the selectman input as far as liaisons to these committees is essential. And also Sean Fernandez, our, our very, you know, well-versed Superintendent of the Green. So basically, between, I thought I'd seen everything with a tornado event that put a wrench into our operations. But the COVID, of course, has been extremely challenging. And, you know, adhering to the governor's protocols, thanks to the management team, you know, we've been able to, I think, accomplish a lot. The incredible challenge, I think. And, and I think this is town-wide, it's a pretty simple thing to restate. The number of people that are still in this town hiding out, as you would put it, it's, it's put enormous pressure, especially during the summer months, on our operations. Basically, as an 18-hole facility, we are running at maximum plus. And thanks to the management team and, and the employees in general, I think they did a very reasonable job in handling all of those challenges. Conversely, of course, the squeaky wheel. There have been comments about tee time availabilities and so on, as the selectmen are well aware of. But I, I think going forward, we've taken necessary steps to mitigate those issues. I gave you some insight as far as a, a kind of condensation of our monthly revenue production. And if, if you, you know, melded that together with the rounds of golf that are currently being played, it's, it's pretty impressive. Budgetary-wise, I, I never thought we might be able to say this, but, you know, revenue-wise, we're trending in the right direction. The committee at large, as I outlined, unlike other committees, there's a robust interest in golf, both from the outside and the inside. And our, our committee members are, in my estimation, exceptional. We've kept intact a business approach to our endeavors and it, it's an underlying principle of how the committees function, you know, as a policymaking group in support of Roman Greer, you know, and his management team. And I was very pleased, this will give you an insight in a positive way. I was very pleased to see that Paul White was appointed by the selectmen, vetted by the selectmen. And it was very timely as far as I was concerned. And Paul White, former state senator, newly retired to Harwich, replaced Tom Johnson, who gave 12 years of yeoman service to the committee. So, you know, that, that just goes without saying. I also outlined in, in like a third phase of, of the report, our major initiatives. And basically, I featured our capital project, which thankfully, thank you, oh Lord, after two years of frustration, is starting to see a glimpse of completion. It's extraordinary. The work of Green Skies is a contractor for the solar component and their subcontractor, COBO. Oftentimes, we don't give any recognition to these people. They have done an incredible job. On some of the worst days I've seen weather-wise, although it hasn't been driving, thankfully, I don't want to jinx it, blinding snow in the cold weather, I don't care. These guys were on the job. And Green Skies, because of the size of the group, I talked with several of their installers. What a job they did. They brought out guys from the West Coast to fill in and ensure this project was going to be done in a timely fashion. And I, I believe, you know, that we're ahead of schedule, if you will. Another important aspect of our current initiatives in response to the selectmen of the Golf Department, and I can't speak for any other departments, but the Golf Department, I'm sure Roman could weigh in on this. We took time to reorganize and look at our capital outlay priorities. And, you know, in response to the selectmen and the finance committee's wishes, we've done exactly that. Continuing efforts as well have involved car path renovations, tree removal, which have been ongoing initiatives for the last, you know, five, seven years and have been very successful. In the clubhouse area, you know, which garners a certain amount of non-golfer activity, Ron Leidner and the Hot Stove, you know, vendor has done a phenomenal job. It's, it's incredible to think, he's been there for five years and what a footprint he has put in place. And I would say the same thing about Miller Golf, a very successful lease relationship that we've had with Bob Miller. And, you know, it's, it's just been fantastic. It gives Roman and Dick Fagan the ability to do their job and, and not be so encumbered with teaching that, you know, they would not be available for big-time decisions and planning. We continue in this year in August, and, and I think the selectmen were copied on this. We, we've also retained our bi-yearly relationship with the United States Golf Association. Their input is tremendous. It, I don't care if it's management, if it's maintenance-oriented, if it's professional services-oriented, they are there to help. It's a short dollar spent, you know, for their consultation. Going forward, as far as capital outlays concerned, starting this spring, one of our big initiatives will be looking at our irrigation infrastructure. In past history, perhaps all the selectmen might not be aware of it, but 10 years ago plus, we had to really bite the bullet, invest tons of money in our irrigation system because it basically imploded. We've got a very progressive plan in place where incrementally we'll address the same issues that they did 10 years ago and do it in a much more, I think, a cost-effective way. And, and I think, and a special note, I put this in, and I think for the benefit of everybody, the committee is well aware of the fact that not everyone in Harwich is a golfer. And the taxpayers in general should be apprised of the fact that golf, basically, short of being an enterprise fund, supports itself. All these initiatives are paid for through revenues that are generated through our dedicated funding. And I, and I think that's what makes it exciting. You know, you know, we don't have to apologize to anybody. And finally, two things in particular. Thanks to Roman's help and the state of Massachusetts, the MGA in particular, our initiatives as far as junior golf is concerned, promoting junior golf, you know, within the school system at large, is really, really paying great dividends. That's the next generation, people. When you look around the neighborhood, some of these towns that invested heavily in multiple operations, they've got a problem. This generation of golfers is aging out and who will replace them? I mean, that's the salient question. And finally, for long-range planning purposes, I think it's important to just mention three initiatives. With the aging demographic within the golf community, our annual feed players, we are engaged in a long-range plan to create forward tees so that a shorter golf course is more accommodating to senior citizens. And you may hear rumors to the effect, and I, and I like to put them aside because this is truly exciting. In the planning stages is a three-hole junior golf course initiative. We found a great piece of unused property behind the clubhouse between the 18th and 14th holes. The prospect of that coming to fruition is, is really exciting. As well as being funded perhaps by external sources, some of these junior organizations, as well as the state MGA, again, contributing to the design and maybe execution of our plan. And the last thing is a really, really progressive initiative, I think. The possibility of a nursery slash giant putting complex. It's modeled on old St. Andrews. It's a complex that they euphemistically call the Himalayas. It's like four giant putting greens in one. It's designed for senior citizen activity with lighting. Might be available to us, thanks to our solar initiative. It's another adjunct that ties in with the restaurant and after-hours activity. So, that's our report in a nutshell, and I'm open to any questions, if you'd like, of myself and/or Roman.
Thank you, Clem. The solar farm is at, that's not operational quite yet, is it?
I wish that it was. They are in the process of wiring, Larry, and, you know, you probably saw my footnotes there. It's a robust 282 kilowatts. The installation of the roof panels is almost complete. The wiring complex, and it is very complex, to integrate with Eversource and the town, and the ability for us to, you know, earn credits and so on. My guesstimate, Roman could probably give you more accurate information, is that they will complete that by April 1, and perhaps sooner. And the reason why that's so important is because this tags into, and I want the selectmen to be aware of it, as we come forward with procurement requests, our timeline now, because we've had so many delays, I'll use the word imperative. It's imperative. When Roman submits our procurement request, it's because they are immediate concerns and need. The old cliche from the business world is, "Time is money," and this is extremely true. Our next component, Larry, or the next piece of this whole project, is the charger grid installation in the car barn for our projected electric fleet, golf cart fleet. So, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, because I think in the past, we've had some difficult discussions with Eversource, so it seems like that's been worked out.
Well, they've been terrific.
Another thing I'd like, I'd like you to comment on, I think several years ago, you were recognized for your environmental hosenry of the golf course. Did you speak to that?
Yeah, we still retain our relationship with Audubon International, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because Sean is brokering and working on, at this time, a new initiative for using wastewater and recycling it in a way so that, in terms of, and I'm sure you've heard, gray water being incorporated into our irrigation system may be very much a likelihood. It'll allow us to maximize our irrigation resources and, you know, extend the life of, if you will, the turf by being able to capitalize on that resource. So, you know, it's kind of a two-prong initiative. We haven't completed the Audubon initiative only because this solar component occupied a big space there, according to Sean, you know, to bring that to fruition. But that, I believe, is on the horizon.
Thank you. Other questions, comments for Claire?
Hi, thank you.
Sandy?
Yeah, Sandy's my husband. You mentioned that the golf course covers its own expenses and doesn't cost anything to taxpayers. But I've been learning about the wastewater issues, and I think that the fertilizer you use does contribute to everyone's need to sewer. And so, in that way, it does cost us something. Anyone who applies fertilizer creates expensive wastewater issues.
Yeah. See, with all due respect, Sean has an open book, and anyone's welcome to look at this. Our tracking of our fertilizers and our nitrogen applications are absolutely exceptional. They are within state guidelines that, and I would humbly suggest, and I think this is very accurate, if you look at some of the autonomous research on this, sadly, the homeowner is far more liable and contributes much more to the problem that you're alluding to. And, you know, we're very much sensitive to that. Roman, you might have some kind of more in-depth insight, but, you know, that's what the committee has, and we've been aware of this, especially, you know, within the county of Barnstable.
Well, I'm aware that if you apply fertilizer according to all the standards and the state recommended amounts, and even if you're very modest, there is still quite a great deal of nitrogen and phosphorus that leach into the groundwater from golf courses. It's just a well-known fact, even organic.
That's, they've done a great job reducing the fertilizer use. And across the, let me finish. When we did the study before on the CWMP, based on the county, the MEP, the UMass, and the county sources, across the, as a source of nitrogen for waterways, it was running around 8% to 10%. The golf course is one of the least of that. It's a small percent. That's what we're concentrating on sewers rather than golf courses. They've done a great job, as actually has Harport Golf Course as well, greatly reducing the use of fertilizers, removing it basically from the rough area, using only small amounts on the green. That's why they've been recognized by the Audubon Society and keep that going. So, you know, we want to be careful remove all sources, but that's, we need to put it in perspective.
Yeah.
So, I respect your comments, but I would, I want to keep it in perspective, as I say. Other comments?
Some areas, it's a higher percent than that, and in some areas, it's lower. And where that golf course is, I don't really know, but any.
It's also not in one of the watershed areas, that golf course, so.
So, if you don't know, why are you making statements of fact?
What, everything that I said, I believe is a fact. And I didn't, what, the answers that were given to me were only to put it in perspective, but not to contradict what I said. What I said is a.
Yeah, I'm disagreeing with what you said, but let's move on. We will, I guess, agree to disagree tonight, and I'm sure this discussion will continue.
And herbicides too, very harmful for all of us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the, Ed, did you have something from the liaison standpoint?
No, it's a very proactive committee that has very active in taking care of their projects and overseeing them, and they're actually a pleasure to be involved with.
Roman, we haven't given you a chance to say anything. I wish I was a kid, so I could do the first tee program.
Yeah, we'd love to have you in the first tee program. No, I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any, but Clem did a great job giving an overall view of the golf operation. It's been a very challenging year, but I'm proud of the way we made it through it, and we have excellent plans for this upcoming season.
Okay. Thank you, Roman. Okay, thank you, folks. We move on to the finance committee. Yes, Michael?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Roman and Sean, and the entire staff at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, as well as Clem and the rest of the committee. Looking at the numbers this year, given the restrictions that started, I think they did an outstanding job building their revenue and being responsible and really fighting to save what we were presented with early on. We were going to lose a lot of money at that golf course, or the revenues were going to be significantly reduced. So, not only did that not happen, they increased, and I think that they're all owed a great thanks from this taxpayer, at least, and board member. And I would just ask that, you know, we had a resident on that expressed some concern, and agreeing to disagree is a great, is a great thing. But I do think that we have Sean Fernandez, who is, I think, a guru of golf courses and maintenance at this point. I think he could give a little bit more overview than agreeing to disagree. So, I would ask that we pass along Clara's information, which we all have from an email from her, and maybe get Sean to outline what the practices of the golf course are. Clara's not alone, she's speaking to several people in the community, and just ignoring this or agreeing to disagree doesn't make it go away, and it doesn't answer the questions. So, if we could share some information, that would be great.
That's a, that's a good point, Michael, except you took my words out of context. I disagree with the percent of nitrogen that she refers to from the golf course. There's data, sound data that's much less than that, and I think what Sean has done is will show that that amount of fertilizer has been greatly reduced.
Larry, I wasn't just referring to your comments, and I wasn't referring to any specific, but she didn't get the answers that she was looking for. And I do believe, as a taxpayer with questions, she ought to get that. And we happen to have an expert that works for the golf course that does use best practices. So, why not refer to the expert rather than us sitting on here agreeing to disagree on many things?
Okay, we'll move on.
Larry?
Yes.
Before you move on, I'm just going to observe something. It was a little bit more than what Michael said. I'm just going to caution all five of us that you can't have it both ways. You can't say that when people show up after the fact that they weren't there on time to have a discussion in an open meeting, and when they try to have a discussion in an open meeting, get upset that they're saying something, it's more than just agreeing to disagree. We probably need to take it up. When people show up at our meetings, that's what we've been invited them to do. And by the way, we work for them. So, I would just say, in the future, we probably shouldn't jump down anybody's throat.
Okay. Moving on then to finance committee. John?
Good evening, and thank you, Larry, for letting me speak on behalf of the finance committee. The report that I put together is in your packet in there, and so I'd like to read the report, and then have any questions after that, I'm willing to answer as best I can. You know, last year, in spite of COVID-19, town meeting postponements, and the challenges of numerous remote meetings, the finance committee did not have to cancel any of our meetings due to a lack of a core. The finance committee was able to make recommendations on budgets, warrant articles for the 2020 annual town meeting. As of December 15, 2020, the finance committee has met twice so far. The finance committee currently has eight members, with the addition of a new member this year, Mary Anderson. There is currently one vacancy on the committee. All the members have been sworn in and have gone through ethics training, with the exception of Mary. And speaking about ethics training with Anita, the state is about to roll out a new program for ethics training, and it's, there's none being offered with the state right now. So, as soon as that becomes available, Mary will definitely take that training. As I think, probably some of us on our boards, I think we have to redo it. Everybody on the board has to go, I think, every two years. You may correct me on that. But as currently, we're all up to date, except Mary, on ethics training. Minutes are being taken and posted on a regular basis. The committee has reorganized and laid out preliminary plans and thoughts for the future, including liaisons with the various department heads. Members now have town email addresses and public, if they wish to contact us with specific questions, we can get back to them and answer them. It's something that I've been actively trying to pursue, and we have that now. And we are working towards having more information on the finance committee's webpage, expanded and enhancements to that, to popular questions that the town may have, or the board wants to have up there, what kind of rolling numbers as to what's happening, and some of those, which I'm going to cover right now. Some of the more ambitious goals for the upcoming town meeting include a review, include some of the following, which I have reviewed with each individual selectman on a one-on-one basis, the acting town administrator, Joe Powers, and finance director, Carol Coppola. Just a few of the highlights of those items, which I think was about 18 or 20 different items. But some of the highlights of those items was working towards collecting past due property taxes, looking at previously approved town warrant articles that have not been completed yet, discussion with the selectmen on their plan for the cultural center. I believe we're in about either the third or the fourth year, supposedly, on a five-year plan. And I have not seen a, physically seen a plan yet that outlines what that five-year plan is. Reevaluating fees for town-sponsored programs, issuing an update and comprehensive report on the debt for the town from 2020 to 2050, inclusive of all principal and interest, and potential selling of town property that would bring in future tax revenues. The finance committee would like to publicly acknowledge and thank Dana DeCosta for his leadership, talent, and time that he brought to leading this committee through some very tough times last fiscal year, with the various meetings and postponements. And I'd just like to personally thank him for all the help and guidance that he's been giving me in my new role as chairman here. I'm rarely, fairly new at this chairmanship here, but through the guidance of Dana, who's helped me, and other members of the finance committee that have served in various positions as selectmen and other boards on town, has helped me tremendously. So, if anyone has any questions, you know, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments?
Larry?
Yes.
John, thank you very much. I think it was a great report, and more important, I think some of your initiatives are great. And thank you for taking the time to meet and go over the list, which I think was a little more extensive than what is on paper with us tonight. The only, one specific thing, I think the town email addresses, I've brought this up to the board, this year, I brought it up to the board last year, and I brought it up the year before. Town email addresses should be a must on every single committee, and even the board of selectmen. Not all board of selectmen use town email addresses, but for transparency reasons, for open law meetings, for many, many reasons, we should have our email addresses, and they should be on the town website, instead of residents chasing and looking for email addresses. So, thank you for taking the initiative to get that done with your committee. One clarification, Mary Anderson, she has been sworn in, correct?
Yes, she has, Michael. She has been sworn in. She just hasn't gone through the ethics training because it's not quite being offered now.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to make sure she was sworn in, because you can't participate unless you're sworn in. The only question we brought up as a board, and I'm kind of waiting for this topic to come back up, on the property taxes. Is it the finance committee's job to collect taxes, or are you just going to make recommendations on the amount of money that's withstanding? And I ask because we did get some numbers from Amy not long ago. A lot of that is owners unknown, which is another initiative I've asked the board to take up. But what function is it of the finance committee's on property tax collection?
Well, I'll give you my answer, Michael. It's not the board's collective answer, but my answer from a private citizen, you know, I look at the outstanding amount due to the town, and we can discuss that later. It's exactly what the amount is. In my opinion, the amount should include the amount of taxes due, the amount of interest due. It should include owners unknown, locations unknown, and it should include attorney fees, which is all collected by the town, from the property owner. And when you add up that number, it's a relatively large number. I'm not going to get into what the actual number is, because I went over with Joe and Carol and each selectman, that I would not publicly say any number unless I ran it collectively by all of the folks first. So, my role, I think, as a finance So my role, I think, as a Finance Committee, is to just make the town aware that we have a number out there, which in my opinion is very large. And I'd like to know what we're actively doing it, and can we pursue it maybe a little more aggressively? A couple of years back, when this was brought up, and you know, I brought it up, we actually published the names of delinquent taxpayers in the Chronicle, I believe. And I think within three to five to six weeks, we had, again, I hate saying numbers, but it was considerable hundreds of thousands of dollars come in because people saw, not only their names, but their neighbors' names. I don't publicly want to shame anyone, but we've got to do something to drive, if you want to call it revenues in this town, to get them up and do. I think we won't have one of the largest uncollected property balances on the cake. So that's, that's my take. It's not my job to, to collect them, Michael. It's my job, I believe, and the board's job, is to see what we're doing to get them collected. Because when other people aren't paying, that means somebody else is paying more.
Thank you, John. You gave me the answer. I just want you to know that this is a topic that I've asked Larry to put back on. And the town administrators was on that meeting, and Amy Bullock was on that meeting. So I believe that we have a meeting in the, or hopefully we have a meeting in the near future to actually discuss the, the numbers on that. And then I would just add to the goal on the town meeting warrant articles is, and there would be another agenda item, but certainly with the support of the Finance Committee, it might get done. We want to know what's left in articles, not, not only what's not been done, so that, so that the town can make the decisions on re-appropriating, say, leftover funds from 2007 articles. We need to get that back in, and, and everything should be voted on based on current, not using slush funds that have been on hold for 14 years. Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
And thank you, Michael. I did sit on the selectmen's meeting where it was brought up. And I, you know, I, we definitely agreed to agree on this one.
Michael, I take your point. I'll work to with Joe to put those back on, get those on the agenda. Thank you, John. There's no other questions? To someone else? We have no public hearings or presentations, or there's nothing on the consent agenda, so we'll move next to new business. Don?
Yeah, first of all, there needs to be a correction in the minutes anyway because it's OPEB, not OPED, on page seven, in the bottom paragraph.
Okay.
But second of all, it was noticed improperly unless somebody wants to consider it a Scribner's error because it is not 2021, it's 2020.
Twenty, yeah.
So it's up to you what you want to do, but I mean, I'm not sure it would kill anybody to just correct them and bring them back because it was on the agenda incorrectly.
Let's, let's make it simple, and we'll just correct it and bring it back. It's not a long discussion.
Okay, Larry, just one.
Michael?
Fine with me. One more Scribner's error, and, and thank you, Don pointed out the OPEB one. The, on page 15, I had asked what the planning board chair and planning board members, along with the planner, thought of Mr. Harris's reappointment, that I thought it was their decision. And, and it said that instead of what. So if we could just correct that top sentence, that was the only other error that I found besides the ones Don found.
That to what?
And I would just take an opportunity again, other than these couple errors, the minutes are an accurate, accurate reflection of our conversations. They're detailed. There's not a lot missing. They haven't been paraphrased. And whoever's doing the minutes, or whoever did these minutes, did an excellent job.
God bless them. I wouldn't go through our meeting to make these minutes. So God bless them for doing it.
Joel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I found the correction that Selectman McCaskill mentioned, but I can't find the one that Selectman Howell had mentioned.
Page seven, last paragraph. Third line, it's not going to OPED, going to OPEB.
Thank you. And 2021.
Well, yeah, the fact that it's, no, the, the date on the minutes is correct. It's, we put it in notice on the agenda incorrectly.
Okay.
All right, you said, Joel?
I am. Thank you.
Next item is discussion possible for the Golf Teaching Pro.
Larry, I moved that we approve the licensing agreement with Robert Miller Golf Teaching Pro as presented.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Larry?
Excuse me, Michael?
The only discussion I would, only discussion I would have is, and I guess it's a question, and maybe the answer's not readily available. I do remember that this came back to us at the beginning of COVID for a reduction in a license fee. So maybe somebody could answer how long Robert Miller Golf has been with the town of Harwich, and what the past license agreements prior to what's listing in the packet was. And did we agree to reduce it due to what we thought was going to be lack of participation because of COVID-19?
Roman, I see you're still here, so.
Yes, hi, this is Roman Greer, the Director of Golf. I'm happy to answer that question. So Bob Miller just completed a five-year deal. It was, it was a three-year license agreement with a two-year extension. And you're correct that he asked for an accommodation based on COVID and all the restrictions he had this year. That was a one-year event only. So this new lease, or I'm sorry, this new license agreement starts, follows the original payment schedule of the first five years. It begins with $5,000 and increases by 5% each next succeeding year.
So Roman, what was the discount that was given, and what was it based off of?
Um, I'll have to go off memory here. I believe that he was due to pay for 2020. The, I think it was just over $6,000 would have been his payment to the town, and it was reduced to $2,700 for that one single year.
So as a follow-up question, Roman, if we were at, at the end of five years, if we were at $6,000 and he's got a growing business, why are we resetting at 5,000 and ending at 6,000 in seven years?
There, there was a lot of discussion at the golf committee level over this. And the $5,000 amount that the license agreement starts at is, is the highest payment that a golf instructor makes to a golf course on Cape. We did, we did market research to see that. And I, I think at that point, when it reaches $6,000 at the end of the five years, that's reaching a maximum, I think, for, for a teaching pro to be able to make any profit. So we would have outpriced him if we continued to keep raising the rate.
Thank you for the answer, Roman. If you could just email me those numbers of the first five years so I can have my record. And then the last question I have is, is this the only golf instructor that we have? Because it's, it's not listed that way, so I would assume we have more. And if, if we don't have more, is there an opportunity for other people to join this?
So, yeah, so that came up in the discussion of if, if we should make this a, a instruction lease or an instruction license. The, because it's a license, it's, it's non-exclusive, so we could do more license agreements. One of the reasons, one of the considerations in that is we have an agreement with the First T of Massachusetts where they do instructions, programs for youth. And the Miller Golf license agreement covers an entire team of instructors. So he has a team of instructors with him in order to accommodate all the golfers that need instruction. So the, the discussion with this license agreement came to, it's not an exclusive agreement with Miller Golf, but I think it covers all of our needs. I would not pursue more license agreements.
Thank you, Roman. Thanks for your answers. Last comment, and Selectman Howell has brought this up with other committees. It would be helpful, I think, for me at least, and I'm certainly would take your word for it as our professional. But the committee, the committee vote, I think, is important in, in the presentation that the committee voted to support it, as well as, so the committee vote is a big one. That, I think, I think that was the last I had. Committee vote, and, and again, I'm going back to Selectman Howell's asked that question. So I think we should be consistent. And that's it? Thank you very much.
We'll provide that in the future, but I can assure you that this was an agenda item on the, with the golf committee for multiple months in the summer to discuss this license agreement, and they were in full support of it.
I'm sure. Thank you, Roman. Just include it in the next one.
Thank you.
Larry?
John?
This is Don. Yeah, Michael's right. And Roman, it's not a slight. It's just that the public needs to know that as part of the packet presentation. It's not a question that we don't take your word for it. Well, if the, the public would like to know if it was unanimous or if it was majority in the, the way we do that, is we post the packet.
I understand. We'll, we'll, we'll follow that in the future.
Other discussion? Entertaining motion?
Motion's been made and seconded, Larry.
Okay, then I will take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next on the new business is discussion, license for Cape Sea Grill.
Larry, I moved that we approve section 1.07 of the Harwich Board of Selectment Liquor License Regulations request for closure of a licensed establishment, Cape Sea Grill, 31 C Street, from February 1st to February 28th for cleaning and updating.
Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Moving to old business, we, this is a continuation, our first item is a continuation of our, of our discussion of the Shared Streets and Space Grants Program application.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to turn it right over to our town engineer for an update on this project.
Griffin, I, oh, there you are.
Hi, everyone. Larry, can you hear me?
I can.
Great. I have Katie Sawyer with me tonight. She's from Tool Design. As you know, we've been going back and forth a little bit, just trying to advance the designs or design concepts that we have for Main Street associated with the Shared Streets, the MassDOT Wintered Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. So we've developed, we, we've evaluated a couple alternatives, which are in your packet tonight. There was one last, we made a last-minute change to extend the limits to the east after talking with Jenny Hewitt in the library. So the up, the latest update includes a little bit farther stretch to the east. What we have here is, we have two alternatives. They're fairly similar. Alternative one basically shows the, what, what we're dealing with through this corridor. Sorry, one step back. What we're dealing with through this corridor is, it's, it's a tight corridor. So in order to provide for the shared, the shared spaces, we need to eat into something. So basically, what we're looking at is we're looking at reducing some of the parking either on one side or the other of the street. But we're also cognizant of those parking counts because those are important for the commercial businesses on the street. So we've evaluated a couple of different alternatives as to what we can do through this grant program in terms of striping and paint and barriers to provide for some additional on-street, either pedestrian or dining space, which is what the grant program is geared towards. So there's, there's two alternatives, and there's actually a third alternative that we also evaluated. Alternative one, which is in your packet, shows that the, the parallel parking would be essentially maintained to the best degree on the south side of the street, while also incorporating dining and pedestrian spaces on the south side of the street. Alternative two kind of flips that and, and puts the parking on the north side of the street. We also evaluated another alternative. We, we, as I'm sure you guys are aware, we met on Wednesday this week and did a walking tour of the area. You know, Mr. McNallys invited a bunch of different business owners and whatnot. And when we did that, we came up, we did come up with a third alternative, which, which we evaluated with Tool Design, working with Chris Eggersen and Mike Cooper. The third alternative, which, which we have not shown, we've not shown because it doesn't quite work, but I want to explain it to you real quickly. Is the third alternative, what, what we looked at, it was basically shifting the traveled lanes to the north. So along the northern curb edge, which is where the town hall is, you would basically have your travel lanes, you know, basically uptight against there. And what that would result in is that would result in parallel park, you know, we, we understand that parallel parking is at a premium through here, and then also the dining and pedestrian space. So we looked at doing that, in, in which would leave potential parking and dining slash pedestrian space on the south side of the street. But one of the things that we were challenged with is as you move from east to west, and you get through the Pleasant Lake intersection and then up to Sisson Road, there's, there's a real, there's a geometric concern, in which case, by shifting the travel lanes farther to the north, we exacerbate that, the geometry issue, which basically offsets that intersection even worse than it is today. So we stepped away from that alternative, and that's why we have the two alternatives before you today. I did want to explain that alternative a little bit because we are trying to vet every single option that we have here because we understand that there are some impacts to the streetscape, parking, and neighboring commercial businesses. Now, as you'll see through our, our sketches that are included in here, in alternative one, which, which makes for, alternative one makes for a little bit more meaningful space on the south side of the street, which is where we have more commercial businesses. There's a new deli coming in on the south side, which is going through construction right now. There's the, the Seal Restaurant, Ruggies and whatnot along there. So, so we looked at, you know, because that was more contiguous to where those restaurant spaces, where we, we thought that that made a little bit more sense. We also looked at what it would take to keep some parallel parking on the north side while providing for some semblance of extended dining on the south side. In doing so, it does shrink up the south side a little bit. You know, where it's, you really want to get eight feet to make it meaningful for tables and whatnot. You know, so, so there's a couple of options out there, alternative one and alternative two. I'll, I'll just try and boil it down. Alternative one provides for parking on the, sorry, let me look at this, parking on the, on the south side with some dining spaces, with some more meaningful dining spaces on the south side. Alternative two provides for some parking on the north side with some smaller dining spaces on the south side. And then alternative three, which we looked at, couldn't quite get to work. But the other thing that we have looked at is extending this to the east, working with Jenny Hewitt and understanding some of the concerns at the, at the library, especially with the summer and folks crossing the street there. We, we did extend that to, to the east to pick up a couple of crosswalks in that area. I will note that there is one mistake on the plans. I think Oak Street is called out as Bank Street. Katie was working very feverishly to get all this done quickly. So, so we missed one label, but it's just a Scribner's error. That, that is indeed Oak Street, and I, I think as you look at that, you will see that. So I will shut my mouth, but I wanted to try and give you just a quick description of, of the different alternatives. I'm really happy to answer any questions, and Katie's here to answer questions as well. Thank you, Larry.
Ed, you were on the walkthrough, and I know when we talked before that, and Griffin, you started your discussion of this, parking seems to be the number one issue. What was the reaction of the business owners to the plans?
Well, there was some concern on, on the south side of eliminating all of, of the parallel parking spaces in, in favor of doing pedestrian, added pedestrian space. In looking at it, there can be actually, there can be actually a combination of, of the bump outs for table seating at some places while leaving some parking spaces in place. If you look at the businesses on the south side of the street, many of them do have parking resources either, but either behind their buildings or on the side of their buildings. So we. We're attempting to Make The sort of Somewhere in the middle On, on all parking or all Pedestrian space. I guess some of the other, you know, issues That we were looking at is trying to make the, the area feel more comfortable for pedestrians To come out and, and use the The commercial businesses along there. And one of the things we're looking at is Trying to get the sort of traffic calming Aspects of, of, of sort of narrowing up The travel, travel way by, by having these pedestrian bump outs and whatnot. Also by doing a better alignment and marking of Crosswalks. And one of the things that, you know, I've seen In Some of the redo's of commercial areas around Cape Cod, principally Marston's Mills. Barnstable Village Is at the crosswalks, they actually raised the crosswalks To create a speed table effect And a level crossing at sidewalk height. And I think if you started that In the crosswalks down by the library and continued it through the district, it would Have the end product of really moderating the speed of vehicles coming through. But that's, those sorts of Improvements are beyond the scope of this current grant program. But by Putting the, putting those crosswalks in place, We can see what the, the visual impact on drivers will be in, in calming their speeds as they go. If they're, if the crosswalks are done much more prominently. And then I guess the other major effort Will be Because, you know, the, the, one of the intents of This whole grant program is to Help businesses Flourish in this time of Restrictions on operation and, and what, the other thing we look at, we've looked at is Trying to reinforce that connection for this district And the, the bike trail which moves Through just to the north of it and Will be separate and apart From this proposal, this grant proposal, we'll be looking at Increasing some of the signage up on the bike trail. And then as they get into the, into the district, Providing some better signage on navigating the district for People using it. And as you can see, a lot of the, the bump outs are going to be done with Basically paint markings on, on the, the street. And in some places, some temporary structures to provide Safety. All things that can be easily moved around if, when they go into effect, they Cause to, may cause to have, have unanticipated problems. But it provides a sort of a real laboratory effort of to being able to test things out To see what eventually will be the best solution In terms of the alignment and making the improvements to the, the district.
Thank you, Ed. Other comments? Bob, I see you on the, you wish to comment as well. I think you have some input from
Yes, I, I sent this letter basically outlining my thoughts on this. It is called Shared Streets and Spaces. That's the grant name. And I, you know, I think we need to adhere to that, that it's shared and it's a It's an attempt to help the business community, the commercial area to try to adapt to these difficult times. I think Griffin and Ed have been good with helping me try to understand and navigate some of this. I personally think The park is a long-term thing that really needs to be included because now you have three restaurants And within feet of each other. You're gonna have the New Deli. You're gonna have Ruggies and me. And we're all doing to-go people. And that means bike people. And you're gonna get more pedestrians. And they're gonna want to eat, have a place outside to eat and enjoy Harwich Center. And I just think we have an opportunity here to try to develop stuff. The information booth in the park is a little aged. That could be replaced with today's technology. And embracing that bike path and just, we need that sidewalk. So I think we're on the right direction. I just want to get this application going and be able to support it, you know, through the Restaurant Association. And hopefully get the money to try this experiment somehow.
Joe, do we have enough information to go ahead with the application?
Larry, Larry, can I add one thing?
Sure.
Don't mind, I'll be very brief. One thing, we're really doing our best to best fit what we can do within the program. The program has limitations. And, and I'd be remiss to not thank Katie and Tool for supporting us through this process. They're very in tune to how this program works. But, you know, there's, and Bob makes a really good point. There are certain things that we do want to add on. But, but the program doesn't support those. So we're trying to kind of baby step our way through this. Create some of these improvements and then hopefully expand upon that. Albeit, as long as everyone's on board with that. But that's, that's sort of the approach that we're taking. We're trying to maximize the dollars that are available. To get as much done as we can in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Do these plans, by question, it remains, do these plans then allow us to vote and I to go ahead with the application?
I think so. I'll defer to Katie on that, but Katie, not to put you on the spot, but, but I, I think we're in a good spot. You know, we don't need to have everything nailed down for the application. We just have to have a pretty good idea. And I think we have a pretty good idea, even based on the feedback I'm hearing tonight. Katie, if you want to chime in, that'd be great.
Yeah, so just a little bit more information on the application process. So we're looking to submit the application next Friday. And the application is for up to $300,000. Depending on what we're awarded, 10% of that amount goes to final plan. So at this point, this is just a concept. 10% of the final grant award will go towards the final construction drawings. And, you know, things like the ADA ramps. So there's still plenty of time to work out the minor details. We're just looking sort of for the overall concept and a cost estimate to submit with the application next Friday.
And so some of the things that we haven't even delved into Yet because we're, we're still, we were still dealing with the alignment Issue is Picking out, to make use of these added pedestrians Spaces, picking out some street furniture to go in the tables, benches, Planters to create, set the separation from the travel lanes and those sorts of things, which will also be added in. But those sort of, before you start picking out The deck chairs, you got to decide how big the deck is and That's where, where we, we were up until, I think, we came to the conclusion that With some, some tweaks of what spaces remain Parking, what spaces are turned over for pedestrian areas. The alternative one seems to be The The Design that we're moving with.
Don?
Yeah, Larry, I'm just curious about that because that was my question. Do we have to pick out the alternative tonight? Because I, I get what Bob had said in terms of, you know, the people who were supportive of this, but It's not just the businesses and the people that surround that. I mean, it's a, it's a major thoroughfare for the town. All of this sounds great, but do we have to pick a final design tonight?
My read is we don't, but Griffin or Joel or Katie, you wish to weigh in?
Larry, I would agree. I think what we're looking to do is, is if there's an inkling for one or the other, We could use that for the basis of pricing. I mean, ultimately what we need to get down to is pricing. So Katie and I have talked and I said, Katie, let's pick the most expensive so we can have the most flexibility moving forward. You know. But we, we just kind of have to identify what we're doing for pricing. So I, I think we probably Between, you know, if we have agreement on either, whether it's one of these two, I think Katie and I can work together to define what the pricing would be for the submission next week. Katie, please correct me if I, if I misspoke.
Uh, yeah, Griffin, that's correct. We actually, the, the program does not require a concept plan. We just find that it's most useful for the community to discuss the project in general ahead of time. It is a quick, you know, rapid implementation project. So The town will have to come to consensus pretty quickly when it's time to spend the money. So we want to make sure that everyone's kind of in the same general page. I think between alternative one and two, we have enough of an idea of what to include in the application. So that MassDOT can, can rate the project against other towns.
Joe, you wish to weigh in and then I will entertain a motion.
Sure, I certainly do. Just that, as has been stated, if the town is progressing towards a January 29th submittal, or I should say no later than, we certainly don't want to wait until the last day. The last day beyond that is the end of February. And as Katie just referenced, were we to be successful, there's a very tight timeframe From award of grant to project completion and appropriation spent, which I believe And I can double check my screen here real quick, is the end of May, yeah, would be May 31st. So really, I just turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for the board. And the question would be, given that, and we'll talk about this concept in a moment, But given the board's schedule next week, Would the board be looking to have final approval for the materials Or final authorization at your meeting next week prior to the submittal of the application?
You need to clarify that for me, Joe. Do we need to do that? Can we move, can we vote to approve the concept tonight so we get the application in? And then come back with the final design?
Yeah.
So, yes, that, that you could absolutely do that. That was my question. Meaning if the board was comfortable tonight, You could do that. But if the board's not comfortable, if the board wants to see the completed materials, We have a tight timeframe next week.
Well, I relate on the rest of the board. I'm anxious to get the application in so we have our, take our big shot at the funds.
I would move that we authorize Staff to finish the completion of the application and submit it For the, was it January 29th?
Correct.
Middle period?
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, is that you, Steve?
That was me.
Okay. Hey, other discussion?
Larry?
Yes, Michael?
I, I 100% support this. Is the motion enough is my question. Do we have to pick Close to a concept? We have to mention concept. And, and I would say purposely no, because we're not there yet. But I would ask if the motion is enough.
I think it is, Bob. That's the clarification from Joe or Katie or?
Griffin?
I, I think so. I, I think we have enough based on what Katie and I have gone through. I think, I think we're in a really good spot. You know, we're kind of, you know, we're, we're kind of moving the puzzle pieces either one north side or south side. So I think, you know, the intent is there. It's just a matter of where the final puzzle pieces end up in, in the final, you know, final design.
You okay with that, Michael?
Sorry, I lost connection for a minute. Yes, I'm okay with that. Fine.
Yep.
Thank you. Then Michael, I'll start with you as roll call.
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you for your efforts. Lot of work and
Thank you all too.
And thanks, Bob, for your help.
Thank you to Katie and Tool.
Larry, can I just add again, I can't believe how Griffin goes at light speed with some of these things. The office is kind of small at the moment compared to what it should be, but we Heck of a lot of output coming out of the office. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Griffin.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Share time, everyone.
All right.
Joe, you're on next with the draft of the Capital L.A. Plan.
So the reason why there was no material in the packet is the, the Capital L.A. Committee Met last week and is meeting again on Wednesday, the 20th To go over the plan for 22 And incorporate that in the overall scope of the Capital L.A. Plan. So this is a topic that will come back with full vetting by the Capital L.A. Committee back to the board next week. So I'd ask that we hold off a week.
We'll, we'll bring it back then. We're moving on to contracts then. One is a Well, one is Robert Hour and the other is RJB for Construction change. Griffin, are you going to carry this or Joe or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would build off of what the engineer has submitted his memo to me. And endorse as he's outlined, the, both of these change orders, regardless of the amount, go before the board. And as you'll see in the exceptional information that Griffin has provided, We're recommending approval of both the change orders. And you can see how those change orders impact upon the, the overall funding that's available Through each of those contracts contingency line items. So we would recommend approval of these.
If I may?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Phase Two Contract One Sewer Construction Change Order Number Four With Robert B. Hour Company for $26,848.
Second.
Discussion?
Larry, I just have one. Here we are. I, I brought it up that we come up with a what went right and what went wrong. And I hope that the board still supports this. I did a little due diligence on my own and, and I get it. But $21,145 change order For something after the fact for cedar shingles that should have been submitted that way and has now taken months To get approved. And I believe, Griffin, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're four or five month delay at this point on getting these pump stations in because of This change order and negotiating back and forth with the contractor that makes the pump stations. Which I have to imagine has created some ill will with that company and doing business with the town of Harwich, but I'll, I'll wait for the report on that. But, but I, I would hope that the board supports putting something together sooner than later On what went right and what went wrong as we navigate towards creating a new Or possibly creating a DHY or a new sewer entity Without knowing where our mistakes were made And, and where we went right, where we went wrong. And I think I'll leave it at that. But $21,000 for a shingle change is a little, a little extreme in my opinion. And we should present something to the town of Harwich residents and voters as to, as to why that happens.
Thank you, Michael. I guess my, my main point that is, is I come from a world where we always went back and looked at processes after the fact if there were Were possible improvements. So I see Griffin shaking his head. I think that's Could be standard practice. I'm sure it is. It'll take some time to do that. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Take a roll call, Don?
For reasons that Michael just brought up, I'm abstaining.
Okay, Michael?
I'm an aye.
I'm an aye. Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
A motion, motion's passed, we're the one.
I would move that we execute, oh, and I didn't add it, and I don't know if you can just make it part of my motion, and authorize the chairman to, to sign, because that was the ask.
Okay, that's my answer. Second that.
Okay, so I, I move that we execute Phase Two Contract Two Sewer Construction Change Order Number Three with RJV Construction Corporation for $74,170 and authorize, as presented, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Larry, can I, can I take one statement on this? I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of order. I, I made a mistake on this. It's actually change order number two. I put three. That was completely my mistake. I, I apologize.
And that was my motion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's your motion. That's your second. So other discussion? Joe?
Yeah, Larry, just a correction. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Just a correction on the quantum of that last vote. That last vote was actually 4-0-1, not 4-1.
Okay.
Okay, Larry, I just have one.
I'm sorry. That's right. 4-0-1. Michael?
Yep. Only comment before we go to vote. I'm just want to echo my last comments for this contract as well. And, and, and the only reason that I'm voting for it, I didn't add that, is because I don't want to hold this up any longer than it's already been held up.
Thank you. Other discussion now, then, goes to roll call. Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
As I said, I didn't vote for either of these two contracts for the same reasons that Michael was bringing up about vetting them more. None of the people that are involved right now were involved in that, but nonetheless, I'm still going to abstain.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So it is again a 4-0-1 vote. Thank you, Griffin. And Joe, putting this together. Moving next to Town Administrator's report, Joe?
First, Mr. Chairman, as the board was blind copied today, I just want to announce publicly what we received from the Mass Department of Transportation, notice of work form. They are already underway as of today, or should be underway as of January 19th, where Mass DOT is doing work in the six, Route Six eastbound. I'm going to say what we used to know as the area around Exit 11. They're going to be doing different installations of equipment. And they've indicated that the hours of operation for the, for days is Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They will be observing traffic restrictions. And in the evenings, they'll be working from Sunday night through Friday mornings from 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM. It indicates various lane closures with occasional rolling stops and indicate that the estimated duration of work is three years. However, all holiday and summer traffic restrictions, as well as environmental conditions, will be observed. So we just get that out to the general public. You know, the board should see in the packet, the Municipal Stormwater Sewer Engineering Services contract that I executed last week, total contract amount was for $33,500. And that was in support of the engineer and the work that he's doing on stormwater management in related, in relation to the MS4 requirements of the state. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, is just the topic I know that you're aware of, but just to put it out there for the board, your schedule for the week of Monday, January 25th, is proposed to be as follows. Next Monday evening at your regular time, 6:30, that board meeting would be dedicated to a full-on wastewater discussion on any number of issues related to wastewater. This is the quote, deep dive that I, I referenced before. And that will cause your regular meeting to be held on Tuesday, January 26th, that's 6:30. So just wanted to remind the board and put that out there for consideration and public knowledge. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe.
Larry, just a question on that?
Yes.
Joe, you mentioned the stormwater contract that's in the packet.
It should have been. If you didn't get it, I will have that put in and I'll bring it up again next week.
Okay. That was not, it wasn't in my packet anyway. And I know we got multiple versions of the packet, but I, I can't find it. And then the other one was the, the blind copy note from MassDOT. Did you send an email out?
I did. I sent it earlier today when we received it and indicated that I would be presenting it tonight as I've done.
Okay, that I didn't get either. So if you could send that again, that would be great.
Will do.
I did get the blind copy, Joe, first, too. I did not get the MS4 copy of that.
Larry, before you move on?
Larry?
Yes.
Who do you want to go first, Ed or me?
Well, you're, I, go ahead, Don.
Yes, I'll just take note because I've said this to you in private, and I just want it out there in public. In the sewer meeting, I'm a little, I don't even know if the word concern is, is strong enough about David Young leading the conversation about DHY. I mean, there was about two years worth of contentious negotiations back and forth. If he wants, if you want him there to answer questions, that's one thing. But, you know, after all we've been through with East Harwich, I'm not sure that home embossing anything is, is a big help.
I want him there because he's been the one that's worked with all three towns to put the information together. And we can, you've had a lot of discussions with it. He doesn't necessarily have to lead it, but, you know, he's been a resource, been an information.
Well, this is.
My opinion, be a mistake to exclude him from the, from the background of it.
I get that, but this is a discussion that I've had repeatedly over this. I really feel uncomfortable about people representing both sides of an issue. I felt that way about John Giorgio being the lawyer for DHY when he was also a lawyer for Harwich and for Dennis. And I feel that way about David Young in this situation because he's, you know, he's involved in our sewer, and he's also involved in the DHY sewer. And just want to point that out because my confidence level isn't that great.
Well, I take, I understand that. I just don't want to throw any expertise out in the discussion. Ed?
Was just going to comment that surprisingly, for, I think, the first time I did get all the materials.
Oh, boy. I'm, I'm good.
Michael?
Yeah, briefly, I just wanted to expand on what I had said earlier in regards to residents and their concerns and their emails. Tonight Clara spoke, Clara McCarty spoke about nitrogen, or possible nitrogen going into the golf course. I just want to point out to the board that she sent an email to all of us, and it was a very detailed email. I did send that along to the chairman and copied the town administrator on it, asking who was going to respond to that. And I think.
If I can interrupt, I drafted a response this, this weekend to that. It was, what I like to do is I like to look at that and let it sit for a day, and then I'm going to send it first thing tomorrow morning. So I can reread what I've written.
So Larry, thank you. But your opinion is, as important as it may be, I, I would like the board at least to come up with a protocol on some of these things. And again, as we navigate this wastewater issue and future asks, I think it's important, and as Don mentioned, just because you came late to the game doesn't mean you're not in the game. It, it's a, that was a detailed email. And, and, and my ask of the town administrator and yourself in, in the foreword of the email was, who's going to respond to this? And Dan Pelletier seems to be somebody that is going after, going and at least responding to everybody's concerns and doing the best he can do to collect the information. In my reading of that email, Larry, it goes beyond what you can answer and what you can't answer. And I think that David Young, who he's paid an extraordinary amount of money to, can, can answer questions related to the I, the ITs or ATs, whatever they are, can, can answer a lot of those questions. So can Dan Pelletier. So collectively, I think that we can get some answers. And I, and I thought that she had some very good points in there. And I haven't had time to respond other than the fact to let them know that I was away and that I couldn't respond. But I thought that there was some, some very reasonable questions in there, Larry, that we as a board should instruct and get answers to as to why and what work we did. And I know you've been involved in the CWMP, Larry, for a long time, so you probably have most of the answers. But I think a conversation is warranted, and I think that the board should look at your response, or, or maybe you send it and see if Clara has more. But I didn't get a response to my email that I sent back to you. And some time has passed. And I think it's important that we answer these questions so that we have support going, and support and confidence going forward. And not only do I think we should answer these questions, I think we should publish these questions and answers so other residents that may have the same can get the answers off of that sheet. But I would like to see some sort of process. And Larry, thank, thank you for at least answering that as one board member and, and the chairman of the board. But our professionals should be involved in this, and the board should also define a, a way that we're going to go on these questions as we move forward, so that we have the public support in things that we're doing. Because certainly, we all have egg in our face on this first round. And I can't support round two unless there's something in place to answer these questions.
Larry?
Oh, Don?
To that end, because I followed up by talking to Carol Ridley, after I talked to Clara, and the basic assumptions lead you to where you need the sewer and everything. So I want to make sure that as part of this discussion on the agenda, we talk about how much excess capacity we have built in to this plan, and how much extra growth that would come out to. We've, we've said nothing. We've said 20%. It could be as much as 40%. I want a real answer on that next week. Because before we start spending millions of dollars of late pipes everywhere, you're pretty much, I feel that we really need to be able to get a handle on what was the assumption of building this in the first place.
I'll send out what I have to you folks as a starting point, then we'll add to it because it is going to other staff members, still circulating it now. But we need to, we need to respond to what we have, and then we can add to the responses we, to get more detailed questions.
I'm specifically asking how much excess capacity we are building for.
Okay. Well, I'll, okay, I'll get to have it in the CWMP. But, you know, there's a mistake that this, people want to, and this is not discussion, I, we'll bring it back. I don't want to prolong this tonight because it's not on the agenda. Okay.
That's all I have, Larry.
Do I miss anyone?
Yeah, I wasn't actually reporting. Now I will. Joe, in, in his comments about so-called Exit 11, I don't know who it was nationally, decided that in a COVID crisis, that it was a great idea to pull down signs and change them everywhere. But I am so pleased that they've maintained the Cape Cod tradition of allowing us to say the root number that used to be Exit 11, because all of our directions are based on what used to be.
Yeah, I know. Okay, I think that sits in. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, folks, and have a good evening.